To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Is there motion improvements minutes from the last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, getting into our action agenda tonight, this is a big one. We have the Allegheny County Board of Ed is here. They're going to give us a presentation for some budget amendments and some other presentations. So superintendent's here, Mr. McKenzie's here, and some members of the board, welcome.
Thank you. Before you this evening, you have a request for a budget amendment. At the February 8th meeting of the Board of Ed, our board unanimously approved a budget amendment to transfer three and a half million dollars from fund balance to capital outlay to be able to complete the next phases of the Fort Hill, or the Greenway Avenue Stadium project. The project's been bid and will cost 4.8, little over 4.8 million dollars. The Greenway Avenue Stadium Committee, with the help of Senator Edwards and our legislative delegation, have procured a million and a half for that project, leaving the requested balance.
Yeah, I just want to take a minute to recognize Mr. Mangus is here as the Chair of the Greenway Avenue Stadium Committee, and we certainly appreciate he was spearheading as I came on, and this is one of the, probably the main objective of the group, to try to get it as timely as we're getting it. So I just wanted to recognize and thank him for all, him and the committee for all their hard work.
So what this, what this in essence does to our budget, it raises our budget requested from 118,440,696 dollars to 121,940,696 dollars. And basically, because this is impacting our budget, we need the approval of the county commissioners to move forward. So this, this amendment would in no way change the, the level of the county's appropriation or impact maintenance of effort. However, this request will have a lasting impact on Allegheny County by, by making Greenway Avenue one of the top venues in the state. This time, I'll turn things over to Mr. Blak.
I wanted to recognize also the board members who are here, President Bender, Vice President Mr. Farrell, and Mrs. Fraley, who are here, and thank them for prioritizing this project so that we can move forward for our students and our community. And I wanted to thank the commissioners for taking a few minutes to allow us to have our expert, Mr. Jay Marley, our supervisor of maintenance, to just go over briefly what, what our goal is, how it's going to look when we're finished, so.
Thanks, Mr. Blak. Good evening. I should could take just a few minutes to go over the scope of work that we've prepared for this project. And I think there's a lot of secrets that's been in the works for, you know, we did the Phase 1 in 2010, so 12 years later, here we are. Essentially, we're going to replace the visitors' bleachers, which, the drawings oriented north to south, so to the left side, you know, obviously it helps, we got Fort Hill and Allegheny on, on the field, so the north end is the Fort Hill end. So these bleachers, visitors' bleachers, to be removed, so we can ultimately renovate the track and make it a full eight lane, all-weather track. And to do that, you know, it's, it's formerly a 400-yard track that was converted to 400 meters at some point, so it's kind of misshapen for this application. So we've got to do some changes to the facility to make it fit, some alterations to the field. And all the way around the track, you kind of see we've got it colored up in gray. We do some vast improvements to the walkway all the way around the facility. And a lot of walls on this project, because as you know, we're sitting in a bowl at, at the stadium. So at the south end, at the Allegheny end, you notice all the way around the radius of that turn is one great big retaining wall, continues all the way across the face of the bleachers. And then, so the, the visitors' bleachers will now look really similar to the home side bleachers, where, you know, they'll be up approximately six feet off of the, off of the ground elevation. And then across the top of the bleachers, there's another retaining wall, the entire length of the bleachers, and we do a pretty vast improvement to the concourse there at the top that you can see. I've got another slide kind of showing a perspective from the field. But another big issue we have at the stadium is stormwater drainage, so we're addressing that as well. And there's a lot of drainage that goes into this project. And the D areas, we call them, the ends of the, you know, between the end of the field and the, and the track, the south D area is essentially one big stormwater retainer's tank that'll collect and slow down the, the stormwater flow out of the facility. So, you know, all things that'll help us for years to come. I can show you the other slide. So this would be the perspective from the field looking at the new bleachers. And what we did, we took a photo of the existing, kind of inlaid or superimposed, you know, a rendering of the new bleachers, so you see how they'll be raised above the, the walkway with, with access ramps up to them. And across the top, you see every one of those abutments or notches is, is an area that'll be a handicap viewing area. So it's, it's, it's a really nice design, and I, you know, we're looking forward to moving ahead with it. And I also want to say, as we're getting ready to, to push into this project, I understand that we're going to receive the services of Jim Filer from your engineering and construction group. And I worked really close with Jim through the Allegheny High School build, and any help we can get from him is really appreciated and will be really helpful to us. Any questions I can answer?
Jay, thank you. I don't know how long we've been, Mark might be able to, but when did we start meeting on this? It, it was pre-COVID, wasn't it?
It was November of 19.
I was going to say, this is.
When we first started.
Yeah, this is a long time coming, but it looks great. And thank you all for your efforts, and thanks for the board for making this a, a top priority, because I definitely think it is.
You could be the first one to run around the track, Mark.
I'll walk.
Okay.
Maybe we could have a Board of Ed Commissioners relay race or something, Bob?
They win. They win. I concede to.
I also wanted to thank Mr. Bennett. We've been working collaboratively with not just the Greenway Avenue Stadium Committee, but with the county behind the scenes as much as possible. And with having Mr. Filer help us, that'll be a tremendous help. And the other piece to this, we also have some projects that we're looking to move forward with at, at Allegheny, and talking with their administration and AD. And coaches, one of their top priorities is a fieldhouse. And at Mountain Ridge, and talking with the principal and the AD, one of their priorities would be two small locker rooms, or a locker room along with a weight room. And we're looking at, depending on the funding, how the funding goes, we still have different entities that may be, may be contributing some, some more funds to us. Depending on how that goes, we're, I'm going to, we are going to try to move forward, hopefully, and if Mr. Marley will get some drawings and get a bid maybe by April, so we can move forward with those projects too. So our entire community is going to benefit, all our students, the high schools will benefit from this, along with our community.
Great. Jay, if we, if we take action tonight, when would construction be able to begin?
We're, you know, we put this project together and we're ready to go as soon as, as soon as we get permits and, you know, the, the go-ahead.
Great.
We're ready to go.
Great. Well, gentlemen, let's, let's take item one. This is a budget amendment for, to transfer 3.5 million from fund balance to increase its unrestricted budget for the Board of Ed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. And we'll take, I'd like to make in addition to the agenda, this would be item 1A, and this would be the rest of the funding package, and it reads, this would authorize the Board of Commissioners to authorize 1.5 million of ARPA funding to the Allegheny County Board of Ed to be used towards renovations of visitors' bleachers and tracks at Greenway, and the fieldhouse projects at both Allegheny and Mountain Ridge. We did talk about this back last summer at a work session, so we got to add that to the agenda. Is there a motion to add it to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, gentlemen, you know, this, this stimulus or ARPA funding, what we talked about was one-time uses that are going to be used for a long time, and I think that definitely fits. So we're, I'll make the motion that we approve item 1A, which is 1.5 million to this project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, board, and Mark, very much.
Come, Mark, come one up, we'll get a, we'll get a quick picture. We can get it here.
Really not dressed for a picture tonight, sir.
We don't, we don't have a presentation.
Where are we going?
I guess we'll just stand here.
No, you guys are the.
No, Jason gets out all the.
Yeah, they don't want me in.
Larry, how are you, Ben? Good. No, no, good, you guys get in.
I have a letter, but I need more than a letter.
Are we too far apart?
Hey, Adam, while we're at it. Too much glare?
Thanks, Dan. That'd be a good project.
Yes, sir. Congratulations, thank you guys.
Thank you. We're not done yet.
No, but hopefully this is a fun project. We'll get the seat in here real quick now.
Yes, we will.
Alrighty. Gentlemen, we went from a long time coming to even a longer time coming. Item number two, this is old Allegheny High School demolition. Adam Patterson, Director Public Works, is here for some good news.
Before these guys escape out of the room, I just want to take a minute and say how much, what a pleasure it is working with Jay. Count on him, he's always timely, professional, always willing to help. I text him at night, he responds, so, somebody that has a true heart for the kids. Anyway, you guys, got a real good guy there. He's got a blue shirt, so he could end up over here real soon. Thank you. Good guy. I'm on the wrong team.
Well, and hey, Adam, I mean, that goes for everyone. I think at the staff level, we, we all work, I, I think, pretty well together. We pick up the phone, call each other, try to solve problems, so it's, it's really good. It's, it makes things much easier when, when we're working together like this, so it's great. Great.
Okay. On for old Allegheny High School.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, we're on our, hopefully our last, well, our second phase. Here we've completed the hazmat abatement of the project, and now it's on to the demolition. We publicly advertised for demolition beginning in December. We opened bids on the first, we received a total of nine bids. We evaluated the bids, we also helped ask for some assistance from County Attorney Beeman. And at this point in time, we'd like to recommend awarding the contract to Demolition Services in the amount of $677,000, 677, 611, and Demolition Services on Call Pepper, Virginia.
Great.
Any questions?
No. Gentlemen, as, as you know, we were able to secure $2 million of state money for demolition, so we're really happy where the bids came in, you know. It obviously can fluctuate, you know, change orders and stuff, but this was, this was really good for us. And, you know, on a personal note, it's, it's bittersweet for me, having started at Allegheny and graduated, and then got elected to the commission as we were building a new school. And, you know, we would have loved to seen it used for something else, but the building was just in such bad shape, it, it couldn't be used. So, you know, one of the things I know we were all committed to was we didn't want it to see it fall into what Eastside School or some of the other ones have turned into. And that's, that's why we've worked quickly to try to get it, get it demolished. So with that, I'll, I'll make a motion, we approve item number two, which is the demolition.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Adam.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And I think, Adam, that we, we also discussed that this could potentially leave some money on the table for infrastructure, preparing that site for future use.
Very hopeful.
Excellent.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you, Adam.
Okay. Item three is purchase of used emergency apparatus, Director Piles.
Commissioners, Mr. Bennett, Mr. Beeman, Miss Linda, ladies and gentlemen, members of the press, good evening. Commissioners, I'm here before you today to ask for your approval to purchase a chase car and an ambulance from the Corriganville Fire Department. The Board of, for the Corriganville Fire Department voted unanimously to cease EMS operations. They then asked us to purchase their chase car and their ambulance. Commissioners, this is not only a win-win for the Corriganville Fire Department, this is not only a win-win through part of emergency services, this is a win-win, most importantly, for the citizens we serve and protect in the area of Corriganville. Commissioners, since 2007, we have provided one EMS clinician at Corriganville. We will now be able to, with the purchase, with your approval, to enhance EMS operations. We'll now be providing two EMS clinicians at Corriganville. We will be staying at the Corriganville Fire Department, nothing will change there, other than we're going to expand and we're going to enhance EMS operations. Again, this is a win-win for all three parties, most importantly, the citizens we serve. Commissioners, it's for all these reasons, I ask for your approval to purchase the chase car and the ambulance.
Gentlemen, any discussion?
No, that's, I think it's a, a good deal. Jimmy's well-fed to this from one end to the other, it makes sense with that, sir. I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Gentlemen, moving on to a large consent agenda this evening. Mr. Bennett?
Good evening, Commissioners. Yeah, quite a large agenda tonight, so bear with me. 13 items on the consent agenda. Item four is a Third Amendment to the lease with Alliance Tech Systems for, at Riverside Industrial Park. That'll extend their lease through June 30, 2022. Item five is the Maryland Department of Human Services Low Income Household Water Assistance Program, signing a memorandum of agreement between us and the Maryland Department of Human Services for Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. Item six is the Ponty Plains Ball Field Operations and Maintenance Agreement, to approve a three-year operations and maintenance of agreement for the Ponty Plains Ball Field in Little Orleans. Item seven is the old Allegheny High School Sports Field Use Agreement between us and the Braddock Warriors to allow them to use the baseball field and parking lot for this year. Item eight is the Allegheny County Detention Center Security Window Replacement Request, Permission to Advertise. Item nine is also Permission to Advertise for the Route 36 Water Pressure Reducing Valve Replacement. Item 10 is Bowling Green Meter Replacement and Booster Pump Request, Permission to Advertise. And finally, Permission to Advertise for item 11, Tri-State and Yule Highway Old Town Road Pump Station Rehabilitation Project. Item 12, Request for Tax Abatement in the amount of $1,519.68 for a property at 846 Gipart Drive. It's been acquired by the city and will be demolished for future development. Item 13 is to allocate $1,000 from Community Promotions for the Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce Like a Woman Day event on Friday, March 18th, at Rocky Gap Casino. Item 14 is an amendment to the Length of Service or Awards Program or Low SAP Policy Changes. Item 15 is Emergency Services Board Appointment of Shannon Adams, Bobby Ritchie, Vince Pyle, Scott Wetzel, and Steve Grog. And item 16 is a change to the Allegheny County Rules and Regulations for Resolution 22-1. It involves updated job description for deputy.
Great. Gentlemen, any discussion?
No, sir.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Administrator Bennett?
Two quick things, Commissioners. One is to thank Adam for all his work on Allegheny tonight, it's kind of the culmination, but he's been working on the Allegheny Demo Project for.
Years.
A few years now, and it's gone through, you know, the asbestos and hazmat remediation, and now, now we're sort of heading down into the home stretch, so thanks to him and his staff for continuing to stay on that. And then just one other thing for you guys, we're working on lining up the budget, so hoping to maybe meet with you as soon as two weeks from now in work session, to start to go over sort of the high level of a budget schedule and where we look to be. More to come on that.
Great. Attorney Beeman?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Great. Commissioner Capirelli?
Just to thank everybody again for all their work on the Greenway Avenue project. It's good to see something like that really coming together, moving forward, so it'll be exciting to see that happen.
Mr. Brody?
Sir, I really don't have nothing, other than we got a very busy spring ahead of us. Lots and lots of stuff happening, so stay tuned.
We certainly do. Just want to thank the board members who came out tonight. It's been nice to work with you. You know, I, I think the county and the Board of Ed has one of the best relationships it's, it's ever had, and, you know, we work very closely together, and I want to continue that. So with that, we do have two people signed up to speak tonight. First, on the Women's Commission, we have Ms. Michelle Stallman.
Good evening, can I shut this?
Yes.
Just don't want to mess anything up. Okay, good evening. Michelle Twig, I'm the current Chair for the Allegheny County Commission for Women. In 2019, we began a listening tour for the, during the county, throughout the county, and one of the action items that came out of that was transportation. We would like to make time with the Commissioners to talk about transportation as a whole, both the buses and funding. We did funding in November through our commission, we raised money through Rapples and things, and we awarded several women throughout the county some funds for different things. Out of the 37 applications we received, seven were for driver's education, which driver's education costs about $400 a person. We feel that if we can get some funding and assistance through the county Commissioners and the county, we could help these women to get driver's ed, so that they can go out and get a job, and then get a car, insurance, and promote their self. We have several other items we want to accomplish this year, but right now, transportation is the top priority. So we would like to sometime make an appointment with the three of you and Jason, and see if we can collaborate together to do this.
Michelle, if you would, if you don't mind, feel free to reach out to little Linda, or you have my contact information, reach out, we'll set something up. I'll probably sit down with you first and get the specifics, and then we can, we can take it from there, but by all means.
That would be great, thank you.
Yep.
Well, I don't know how much time I have, that's why, I've never been to a Commissioners meeting.
So, so that, I mean, when, when she meets with me, that, if you don't mind, she can just bring all the suggestions at that point, we'll compile them and then get it in front of the Commissioners.
Bring specifics and?
Yeah, we have many specifics and we have some suggestions. We've also been in contact with the Women's Civic Group and Julie McCoy at the Chamber to work with some projects that we want, but right now, transportation is the main project, is we feel if we can get women behind the wheel, you know, it gives you an empowerment and, you know, jobs and everything goes from there. So thank you.
Pretty good.
Thank you, and thank you for, everyone for volunteering your time. I know the group has been reconstituted in the last couple of years, so thank you. Okay. Up next, we have Nancy and Jim Brant.
You have a lift chair. I'm here because I like peace and quiet, and I have not had it in our area for the past year. I live, our house is 30, 300 feet from the Bedford Road Fire Hall. And there's a road comes down and goes around, we have 11 people living on that road. And back in 69, we moved here, and the siren was going off, and our children and ourselves had, had hearing issues. So we went to Jean Smith, she was the Director of Emergency Services at that time, and we said, is there anything we can do? We're losing our hearing, the sirens are loud. She said, put it in writing. I put it in writing, the sirens went off. She said, there's enough technology that we do not need sirens. And that was 54 years ago. So they went off, and we had peace and quiet for 54 years. And this past year, they started going off again in the spring. And I stopped up there and I said, what's going on? And they said, the firemen cannot hear the sirens going off when they're mowing their grass. And I thought, the technology that we have, the pagers, et cetera? I said, I just don't understand this. And they said, and I said, well, why do they go off at 11:30 at night? Oh, it was an accident. Why do they go off when all the firemen are there for the bingo? Oh, it, you know, they had no answers. You know, it was almost, go live with it. And I, I talked with staff at TWR, and they said, there's a technological advantage that we have, we have no need to have the sirens going off. And, and since that date, since 1970, the cell phones came out. Can anyone tell me what year they were introduced to the public? I did a search on it, I didn't know, 1983. So therefore, they have additional, is it right?
Probably, as Santa says, the big brick.
Well, anyway, you can check it out. And it, the cell phones came out, so now you have cell phones, they have vibrators on them. And by the way, I, the other day, with all the snow on the ground this past month, the sirens still went off, and I thought, they must be mowing their grass. Anyway. Anyway, we, we have issues with it. I have excruciating pain when those sirens go off. And when I finish here, I'll tell you how I deal with that. There are 11 homes on our street, dead end. Eight people work, eight, eight families work on that street, out of the 11. They don't hear the sirens, they're at work. Two are retired, my husband and I is one of them, the other ones are volunteers at the fire hall. And one is empty. So because we're retired and there, I think we get the full ramifications of all this. I talked to my audiologist, and they said, get a decibel meter. I got one, and it only went to 100, and, and when the sirens reached that pitch, I, my decimeter, decibel meter would not go any further than 100. So, and, and the audiologist said, that is damaging to your ears. And, excuse me?
That's Tom, sorry, man. Thank you, Al, though. Sorry.
So, I mean, I, I didn't have a certified decibel meter, but I had one there. And when it would, siren, sirens would go off, they told me they would go off three times when I stopped at the fire hall. Now they go off five, stop, five more. And my husband's going to finish up telling you what actions happens as those sirens go off. And they, the feedback came back to me, nobody complains, complains but you, Nancy. So my neighbor said, I don't go outside, in the summer, the sirens go off, I have my SC on. I don't care whether the sirens go off or not. Winter, I have my door and windows shut. We like the fresh air. And when the sirens go off, we have to get up and shut our windows. I have a friend down in Groundville, that's a mile and a half probably, from the fire hall. She did, she has to shut her windows in the summer as well. I did a search on the computer about sirens and how, what's happening with them throughout the country, and more and more of them are being shut down. Corriganville, we heard a discussion here about Corriganville, our church is right there. They took over the, the bar, the bar at Corriganville's bar, and that's our church now. The sirens right on top of that, our building, and the missionaries come and stay in those apartments. So that may be the reason that Corriganville is no longer sounding the sirens for fire. They are just sounding the sirens for ambulances. And, you know, I'd be satisfied with that, because Bedford Road doesn't have ambulances. So that means it would be completely shut off. So my life without sunshine, vitamin D, fresh air, pears, I have pear, I have a little orchard, I have blueberries, strawberries, and flowers, that's, that's almost eliminated. And my concern is, the next step is to get a cochlear, cochlear implant to help with my hearing. And I hope it doesn't come to that. Now, I want to show you how I go out to get the mail. This is what I wear to go get the mail. And it will, it will help my ears greatly, and if I'm picking my strawberries, it's like this. If the siren goes off, I don't have to wear it unless the siren goes off, okay? It's just this inconvenience. So if I go get the mail, or hang up clothes, or go to the compost pile, this is my companion. Not a, not a firearm, but this little, little apparatus. 398, 398, at Harbor Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Did you have any questions to me?
I was going to ask either of you, how, how often do you, is the, the siren go off at this time, approximately?
There is no, I don't, sometimes we, we get to document it. If he's going to address some of that. We cannot sit there and write down everything.
I was just saying, like, even an idea.
Several times a day. I believe they made, announced not to make good, that'll go off at night. I heard that, don't know.
Have you spoke to the fire department?
Yeah, I went up there and talked to her. She said, we're just going to do three cycles of it. And she said, nobody has complained but you, Nancy. And can you tell me why? It went off at 11:30. Offed as an accident. I mean, that was the kind of conversation I had. I did write a letter to Jim Piles back here, and it was a copy to you, of you. Now, I don't know if you got it, but I have heard nothing bad from anybody.
Gentlemen, these are lists of the calls from the fire hall when they were, whether they went out or whether they didn't. Now, I have documentation here that they got called out, they ran a cycle twice, that's five, five sirens each time. Nothing left the building. Why they did it, I have no idea. And another time, it went out, his chief's car went out, no lights, no siren, nothing. Just left the building. And they indicated it was just a call for the sheriff, or for the chief. But that's our basis for fire, following this thing, to get the sirens stopped. I've had five back surgeries in my life. I'm not good, as you can see the way I walk there. But it's just unbelievable. If I sit outside, I have to have my ear protectors like she's got, because I can't move that fast to get inside, out of the, you know, in, out of the weather, and out of the whistle. But I really believe it needs to be stopped. Anybody have any questions?
I don't, I don't know what authority we have over the fire departments. We'll have to, because they're not, fire department's a standalone organization. They're not county organizations, they're their own organization. The chief and, and members have full control of that.
Why didn't, why didn't you come to me?
Some, but not the majority of it, nor do we have a, a legal reason. Let us ask them, see what they can say.
And ma'am, I think that you had stated that you, you did not have an issue, if it just was specifically when there was a fire, that, that they used those particular sirens?
I, I'm having trouble.
I'm sorry. I, I'm saying, that you said that you did not have an issue if it was only used specifically when they had, you know, an incident at that particular site.
For 54 years, there were no sirens, and no one had ever said to me, man, I would have, my cousin would have lived if there been a siren. I don't think there's any documentation of that. I would, I would welcome that, but I don't believe that. And I, for 54 years, there were no sirens at all, for any occasion, for fire, ambulance, or anything. And I'd like to see it go back to that. It's already been a year. It started last spring, and I just, we have cell phones, we have pagers, we have vibrators on cell phones. There's options. And it, it, it impacts the value of property. I, I, I ran it, I, when I did a search, I found that out. I did not know that. It, it can affect the value of your property, just like the airport could.
Gotcha.
No, I think people, people need peace and quiet.
Commissioners, oh, sorry. If, if you would, let Director Piles and I look into this a little bit more. We've already looked at it somewhat. Many other fire companies in the area do, do also alert like this. So it is throughout the area, but let us dig into it a little bit more, and we'll, one of the two of us will get back to you with the response.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, folks.
Okay. I guess while, while we have the Board of Ed here, you know, the governor came out with a statement today on mask mandates. He's, he's pushing the State Board of Ed to push it back to locals, which I, I think is the absolute right call. You know, they had a, they had an emergency session last fall, the State Board of Ed, who are unelected, and I think it needs to be in the decision of, of the people sitting here tonight, because I think they have the best decision-making powers. So I would hope that the, the State Board recognizes that, you know, from, from local people all the way up to the governor. You know, we're falling behind Connecticut, New Jersey, Massachusetts, you know, on, on these local decision-making processes. So I, I hope that they end up doing that in the next couple of days, because if not, I'm not, I'm not sure where it's going to lead. So, okay. With that, our next public business meeting is going to be Thursday, February 24th, 5:00 PM. Thank you.